Hey, what's up? This is a private coaching session with Roger. Roger, how are you doing?
I'm doing good, good. You too?
Great, amazing. So twenty big blind button versus big blind. Uh, we wanna look at the calling range. Okay, so button opens, big blind goes all in for twenty big blinds. What do you call it?
Uh, look at pairs, I think, uh, at twenty, I think we have to go with sixes, yeah, between there. Um, sixes and up, a suited, um, I think like a six, a seven suited, probably. There is offsuit, I think, ace eight, is eight off. Um, it's for twenty, yeah. Think king, king eight suited and up?
The eight?
Yeah, I know. Oh, no, 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 it's too, too wide, I think.
You're calling twenty big?
Yeah, it's twenty, I have ten in my head. Um, let's say, uh, king, king jack suited. King queen offsuit. Like this, king queen offsuit, that's even a little bit out of the box, I think. Yeah, five can be a call. Um, let's see. I think for twenty, this is it. I think if we go to fifteen, it will get more, a little bit more aces.
Okay, so fifteen? Here we go.
Yeah, I will open up pair, snitch more. So, let's see, a six, a five maybe, yeah. Uh, now I'm saying, I think it's optimal. If you ask me, what do I do?
Yeah, I'm asking you what you do, not what's up.
Yeah. Then I'll be much more tighter.
Why?
Um, because people in general don't jam that, that much as they're supposed to. So I don't think they're jamming, um, GTO ranges. Maybe some Brazilians do, but I don't think their population does it. Um, so that's why I want to have, want to call off a couple of notches tighter than probably was optimal. But still can be too tight though.
Okay, what if your perception was wrong?
Uh huh.
That like population probably is not shoving the charts, but this is an area where, like nowadays, like where people kind of improve easily. It's easy to, to push full chart, pre-flop, and then it's kind of an area where people are doing better and better. I wouldn't count on population making a lot of mistakes with push shove calls under twenty big blinds, honestly. Especially if you go like above the twenty dollar games, I think it's kind of very common. Like you open the button, the, the, everyone knows what to shove, more or less, right? And then everyone knows what to call. It's kind of common knowledge right now. It's one of the areas where population improved the most on. It's not like you can say like, okay, population is bluffing pre-flop more and more, you know? It's more like, uh, this, they get to practice every tournament.
Yeah, true. Um.
The people do shove hands like, I don't know, uh.
Sometimes she, ten, check ten, check nine suited.
Yeah.
That kind of hands from the small blinds. I shove them now as well for twenty. I shove, shove any pair. Uh, um, and then with the ace off and the ace suited, I'm probably making mistakes. I'm mixing those two up. So I don't know for sure. But, um, okay, some, uh, twenty picks. What I, what I call, um, for twenty? Um.
We did the twenty already.
Yeah, at the fifteen?
Yeah.
Um, let's say, uh, ace, ace nine off and up. Uh, king jack off and up. So king jack, king queen off, and then king ten suited and up. Um, queen jack, queen ten suited for twenty. Yeah, there's no ICM, uh, it's just pure shit chippy.
Yeah, we're not.
Okay. Um. Yeah, that's what I call, but I, I guess, um, that's for fifteen. Yeah, that's what I call. I think the, the correct calling off is like probably any suited ace, any king six and up. Probably like, yeah, queens, queen eight suited and up, maybe queen jack and queen ten off. Check ten suited, maybe. I think that's our like, that's our like the ranges that, uh, should go probably. If it would go correctly, but that's not what I'm calling. I'm not calling king seven suited when fifty big blinds jams. And I, I'm also fifty effective, so.
Yeah, if these suited kings, you should not worry too much about it. Okay?
Uh huh.
It's really like, uh, you need to have the core of the strategy. If you can grab the core of the strategy, it's good. And looks like,
Uh huh.
Looks like you know it more or less. Okay, except you don't think you're cute. All right, so let's try, let's try another scenario, okay? Uh, let's say you open a twenty big blind, uh, from under the gun. Okay?
Uh huh.
And then, uh, you get shoved on. By?
By which position?
The button.
Uh huh, twenty effective?
Yes.
I think, um, when the button shoves twenty, twenty uh, bigs under, uh, versus my under the gun range, that's supposed to be strong. Um, I saw something like this today, uh, and we should be very tight with calling off. I think the pairs are like nines and up. Not even eights, I think nines and up. And then it was, I thought it was some, or it was the button or it was the, the, the big blind, but um, he's, of course, his king is, um, his king off and up, and then his queen suited and up. Uh, and that's for twenty. Maybe kings, king queen suited, but that's already a little bit dicey.
Really?
I, I think when for twenty, when we open, when we are open under the gun and button shoves twenty, and I don't tag him like a sumaniac or something like that. Uh, I'm calling, I'm not gonna call off more. I'm not gonna call off king ten suited.
Okay, so that's the right idea. You have the right idea. Like based on positions, you should be tighter, but you're missing a pair here. Like even like this ace ten here could be mixing.
For twenty, yeah?
Yeah, twenty big blind, this is, uh, you open under the gun, and then, uh, the button shoves on you. So this is your calling range. And then.
Actually for the.
So you're, you're leaving some lines at the table here.
Yeah.
Right?
Let me see, I'm gonna watch it for, and watch it to your wizard. It says the whole.
You wanna see the wizard?
Yeah, I'm already on it.
The wizard is here.
So. Hmm? Let me see. We have twenty, twenty effective, all right. We open. The button goes all in. And what should we do? Yeah, it has like from sevens and up, a queen. Hmm. Yeah, a queen.
Yeah.
If I look at TV. Uh, eighteen, so ten percent, one point eight. Okay, so a queen is not delivering one point eight. Um, except also, as Jack suited, is not delivering that. So if I, if we, uh, do it like ten percent of aces.
Yeah, but that's with ICM. Ten percent of aces is when you look at ICM models, not chippie.
Ah, okay, okay, okay. Okay, then I'm, yeah, then that's wrong. Okay, so ace jack. Ace Jack's, uh, suited and a queen off. Oh, okay. That probably a call ace queen off, by the way. I call them off much wider now, and that's, not the sevens, I think. I think I'm gonna start calling with eights. I don't know, sevens? Some the cusp, uh.
Yeah, uh, you need this is what you need to find for a calling range.
Uh, 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 king queen suited, yeah.
Right. And then, let's look at this one, cuz you were missing some as well here. So this one was twenty big blind button versus big blind?
Uh huh.
Well, let's see. So for this one. They're missing this, 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 this. This one you had it. This. And that's it. So this one is.
No, that's pretty good. From the button versus, uh, at twenty, it's this.
Yeah. All right, so now.
Yeah.
What if it was ICM? Uh, let's see what we have. Give me fifty percent of the field left. Symmetric stack, everyone has twenty big blind. Uh, button opens. And then big blind goes all in.
Yeah, fifty percent left. Um, we haven't even, I think we have a tighter openings range, then with no ICM. So the rejamming stack should also be jamming off tighter. And that leads to our calling ranges going to get tighter. Um, I looked at this, uh, uh, this morning a little bit, did some practice a little. And I was off like a lot, uh, a way to lose in some spots. Um, like two or three pips to lose. Okay, so, uh, uh, so like if you look at, uh.
Start with the pairs, the pair, yeah.
Uh huh. Um, for twenty, you say?
Yeah.
Uh, I think nines and up.
Ooh, you're not on the final table here, Roger.
Yeah, but.
It's, it's like you're on level, what, level eight? Level ten maybe on GG?
Uh huh. Okay, so the fifty percent is, let's say, is that like, if, if like thirty comes in the money and six, sixty pairs left?
Uh, no, it's like a thousand players, uh, thousand players are playing. Five hundred later, just still open.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Um, yeah, then, then I'm going much loser. So uh, let's say eight, uh, eights is there, sevens is there. No, that, that, nah. Maybe you're right, like with fives.
We'll put them in blue, we'll mark them as mistakes already.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's like sevens or eights. Um, and if you look, look at the, the hands that we'd like to call.
How about they do suited?
It feels really bad, you know, to call off what is too suited.
Indeed.
It feels really bad. I think like the, the, the suited hands are like the hands you want to shove on the small blind and big blind for twenty.
What about the, the solver special?
That's a shoving hand, that's not a calling hand. We, we do not call with that hand. I think it's like, uh, I think it's like ace ace eight.
They say, not bad, not bad, and then offsuit.
And and the offsuit is probably, um, ace, ace ten or ace nine. I will guess ace nine, because most, most of the time it's like one pip up. Um, yeah, one, one pip, uh, uh, should be one pip stronger. The kings, I think, is like um, the suited ones, I guess, like king, king ten suited. King nine, maybe mixing. So draw the line there, and with, uh, with offsuit farion, farion is like king jack off, king queen off. Um, let's say, um, uh, jack, queen jack suited, but I don't like them as, as, as calling hands.
What about jack ten suited? You calling twenty big blinds?
No. The, the, the problem is, I like, I like the hands to shove, like I like queen jack, queen ten, queen jack off. Nah, not queen jack off, but like, uh, queen jack, king jack suited, then king ten suited, queen ten suited, jack ten suited. I like them more as jamming ads and not the smartest calling hands.
Right.
So I, I, yeah, probably, probably something like this.
Okay, very close to the solution. You got a few mistakes. You, you could dig, this is mixing. This is marginal, marginal, this is not in range. Uh, this is in range marginal. That's about it. This is mixing. That's about the range.
Okay, that's fine.
Now,
Uh huh.
Uh, what about twenty-five percent of the field left?
Okay, um.
So that's late range is over. There's sixty, the thirty paid sixty left.
Yeah, and that's, that's, I think, where I struggle with my ranges the most. Or play too aggressive, or play too tight. Um, so we as button open.
Start with pairs.
Yeah, we as button open and big blind jams for twenty, and what we call off is pairs.
Yeah.
Um, if I don't know, I should just say eights and up. That's like my standard answer.
Yeah.
Um, the, yeah, the suited aces would be like and that's where I think the, the part of my story comes from, is that we should call off tighter uh, from that, that gun. So from twenty-five percent, so I think it's like um, for twenty, I think ace ten is probably even mixing, is ten suited. So ace ten and up. And then ace jack, his queen is, and then, and then a queen off. Um, full frequency and ace jack is probably mixing, depending on my opponent, I call or not call.
Okay.
Um, king queen should be in there, I think, suited.
What do you think is stronger, king queen suited or ace jack off?
Um.
Cuz there's a pretty big difference.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about, there was, I heard something about uh, king queen.
If you flip, if you flip, which, which side do you pick? Which one has the more, most equity?
I think king queen suited has more equity than ace jack off.
What if?
I think because it's suited, it's blocking kings and queens.
What if both hand breaks? Who wins?
Yeah, then ace is high, of course.
This is a lot stronger than king queen suited. A lot. The sound is not so good. The sound is pretty it's pretty strong. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. Ace nine, yeah?
My mixing.
Okay.
Yeah, ace jack, you have to call. It's like branding, ace ten, you almost have to call. It's kind of, uh, you have to remember, it's the positions. Okay, you open the big blind and this guy shoves into you, and then, like this, this should be shoving range. You know? So he's shoving a lot. No, I don't expect people to shove everything here, but I expect them to shove these here a lot. I think, you know, and then pairs a lot.
Check ten.
Almost everything here, more probably shoving, people have a bad tendency of shoving these here. So they're, they have like less.
Yeah, and they should call it.
But more a seven off. So just like this bar here becomes here. But really? Uh, yeah.
Hmm, yeah, okay. Um. Yeah, I need to be wider up, that's, that's part. Um, okay, the, the, the kings, then. Uh, it's probably like king jack suited, king queen off.
Hmm, no, that's not a good call at all.
To what?
Huh? It's twenty big blind, it's too much.
Yeah. Yeah, there I, I'm looking for, uh, for balance, there are, uh.
Yeah, yeah, I'll think, think about, there's twenty-five percent of the field left. Right?
Yeah.
You can't call off with king queen off anymore. You can't, like, this, this one is marginal. It's like the stall in the whole thing here is that king queen suited.
Yeah.
Or maybe that.
Yeah, I don't call. Uh, no.
Yeah, but this is what you need.
Yeah, okay.
I know you don't call ace jack here.
Uh huh.
But you need to.
Okay.
Yeah. What if it was ten percent of the field left?
Good, ten percent is, we're already in the money, I think, then?
Yeah.
Uh, because twelve, twelve point five get paid, yeah, normally. Something like that. So we're in the money, but we're not the final table yet. Like last two tables, last three tables, something like that.
Uh, no, no, ten percent of the field. So you're like, there's, uh, hundred players paid, and you've got hundred twenty-five players left.
Oh, that's before the money?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, then really starting to get through the to the ICM pressure, so, uh, I think we need to, to be even more tighter than the last example.
Okay, so we'll start with the pairs.
Hmm, let's start with tens and up. Ace jack suited and up. And, uh, ace queen off. And that's basically it. For twenty. Um, yeah, I think, think like something like that.
So you're missing six ten suited. Uh, yeah?
Yeah, because it's, uh, for me, it's like twenty-five, we're twenty bigs, so we can let's say we can just cruise into the money, but on the other hand, we don't want to blind out too much, because we want to give us a chance to make it to the better places.
Yes, but keep in mind that it's still positions, right?
Uh huh.
It's like scammer versus scammer here.
Yeah.
Like, uh, this, this should be the big blinds shoving range. Okay?
Uh huh.
So maybe he doesn't find the king six, they can fire the king four, but he finds way too many offsuit aces here.
Yeah, so the shopping ranges, the shop, the shop, probably the, the yeah, they're shoving probably the right amount of hands, but the wrong kind of hands.
Exactly, more pairs, more offsuit aces.
But I think they should, they should, should, should initiate more pairs then. Um, also in that kind of spot, maybe then over, over aggressive there. Cuz probably, I, I show almost every time, any pair, from like twenty, eighteen, something like that. And I, I adjust to the, of course, to the, to the razor.
Yeah, no, no, it's good. Usually like these pairs, they wanna play a lot, yeah. Okay, now, 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 now.
Okay, so this, okay, we will, and eights and nines are losing, losing money if I don't call them?
Uh, they're making a little bit. They're in the range. The ace ten suited is. So.
Uh, uh, uh.
So you got final three tables.
Uh huh.
Uh, just a second, okay, this one.
Yeah. I was still talking about twenty bigs, huh?
Yeah, button opens, big blind shoves, what do you do? Final three tables.
Okay. Um.
Final three tables, everyone has twenty bigs. Start with pairs.
Read somewhere. Uh huh. I read, I read somewhere that we, I don't know if I remember it correct, is that we should like, uh, if we, if we are like twenty-seven left, so last three tables, we should play like more aggressive. Uh, so we can make it to the final table. Um, I don't know where I read that, or saw that.
But, yeah, you can, you can try to steal, sure, but here we're looking at calls for now.
Yeah, 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 but so that also means that we I don't know if that means if we should call more, but okay, let's start with pairs, um. I think it's still like nines and up. Maybe even, yeah, nines and up. Um, uh, look there, this, I thought something, so we have to be call off more, because we want to get a big stack, bigger stack. Uh, then the ace combos is probably also gonna be widening up, so let's say ace eight suited and up.
You say ace eight?
Ace eight? I don't know. King ten? King, uh, king, check, uh, king ten, king jack, king queen, uh, is in there, I think. King queen off suit. Mixing. Mixing. But that's, that's the bottom, I think. And then the offset aces are probably like ace ten. Ace ten off, ace nine off, ace ten off.
Ace ten or ace nine?
Ace ten.
Okay.
So, yeah, in the. Okay, I'm too, too tight in the pairs.
Uh, this is not in range. This is not. This is kind of range, this is mixing. Your way to lose here, two, two tight in pairs and two loose and everything else here.
Yeah. Okay.
What if it was the final? Final two tables, let's have it, let's do it. We're here.
Uh-huh. Yep. Don't know why that feels like the last year, but. Let's see.
You know, someday.
Someday I'm gonna make it to the final table.
Two tables and finish the aces again?
Yeah, I'm gonna. Gonna mark that in the calendar.
Sure. All right, final two tables now.
Yes.
Open from the button. This is, you know what, this is seventeen big line you're calling now. What do you call seventeen big line with? Start with the pair.
So seventeen means that's. Probably it's gonna show a little bit more. I think the range is, we shoving should be more wider. Yeah, for twenty, I think, a little bit, snitch. Cause we don't want, they won't, don't want to get blind out, so. Of course, they're gonna shove probably a little bit wider. So that means they're all colored, which should be a little bit wider enough as well.
This is the shoving. How'd you do? Alright, what do you do? What do you call with?
Uh, let's say sevens. Sevens. Maybe six is mixing. Six is mixing probably. Um. We're going for the ace. Um. None of those five, uh, going for ace. Ace eight. It's nine, it's eight, it's nine. Probably for suited. And then the offsuit ones are probably like, so like ace ten off. Um. And up, of course. Um, uh, king, queen suit, probably in there or not, seventeen. It's already, probably it's gonna mixing a little bit. I'm putting it in there, um. It's not in there. So, yeah, this one, uh, king, queen, king, jack, of course not, that's just not calling.
King queen off?
Just hope. Oh. Okay, gonna let it go.
Okay. Well. This is all, like, this is not in range. This is not in range. This is not in. So you're calling to lose here. Okay?
Okay.
And six, well. Not in range, but not a big deal. Uh. Ace ten is mixing majority call, but it's the floor, this is the floor.
Okay, it's good.
So. From what I understand. When you're too deep, you don't, you call too loose. When you're very deep. And when you're. Not deep enough. You call kind of too tight.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, yeah, it could be, cause I think when I'm deep, I'm thinking, okay, okay. It's, uh, it's okay if I lose and. That's, that's not good, and if I'm too tight. I'm thinking, oh, now I'm gonna get passed out of the tournament, so I play too tight. It could be, yeah, probably this. So, yeah. I need to find folds deep stack and I need to find calls short stack. And then especially in pairs. And more folds in the Broadway hands. Uh, yeah. For summarizing a little bit.
Alright. So. This one is gonna be. You, you are now on the final table.
Bubble or the final table?
Final tables.
Okay.
Okay. You have.
Okay.
Twenty-ish big blinds. Okay?
Uh-huh.
And then the big blind is shoving, you open and the big blind goes all in. Hey, he goes all in for fifteen. Fifteen total. You put two in the end, you're looking at thirteen. You gotta call thirteen big blinds, what do you call thirteen here? Start with the pairs.
Um, for first, uh, what's the, the, the best of the. The stacks from the other players?
Everyone has.
Like.
Eight twenty big blinds.
Okay, so everybody.
Some have less. This guy's one of the short stack and he push.
Let's see. Think it's, the pairs are like, uh. Seven, sevens and up, I think. Um. And then. Suited hands probably ace nine suited. And then the off suits. Are probably like, uh. Okay. If that's too tight, then probably the off suit should be like. Ace nine off suit and up. And I think maybe a slip of king queen suited, but I don't much sure, but maybe it's a slipper. That's it.
Right, 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 so you're gonna call off with ace nine here. Really? I can count on you, Roger.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't.
One million dollars.
Uh, then, um. I think, um. Should be maybe, yeah, okay, the off suit is what, that's.
Ace nine.
Okay, get the ace, ace, get the ace nine off and. We play the ace ten. For thirteen. We only have to call thirteen. Um. But. Of course, we have like red premium, so. I think in game I would call off like ace ten. Maybe it's, it's jack is ten, depending on the player.
Good, honestly, Roger, if you call off with ace ten, I'm very happy. Okay?
Uh-huh.
I'm just very happy.
Uh-huh.
This is the goal today, I don't want you to fold this jack here.
Uh-huh.
Even if you're on the bubble. Even if you're on the final table. Even if whatever the, the scenario is.
Uh-huh.
You don't fold here these. In, in this scenario, button blinds.
Yeah. Let's say it's button blinds, uh, on the exact bubble. Probably then we have to fold it, yeah. Oh, what would you say then? But I'm gonna call. I think the exact bubble we should fold like a lot. Uh, look, look if it's like the bubble on a two dollar tournament, uh, yeah, uh, I not really care a little much. But if it's the bubble of the one fifty or the twenty-five. Okay, a little bit more. Should not be, but I do it.
Alright, let's, let, let's do another one. Alright.
Alright.
You're now on the bubble. Okay, back on the bubble. You raise the button. You have twenty-three big blinds. Okay?
Uh-huh.
And the small blind covers you, the small blind has like, uh, he covers you.
Uh-huh.
He, small line goes all in.
Okay.
And it's back to you, what do you call with? Start with pairs. Stone bubble, with button, small blind, twenty-three big words.
Now I'm gonna really, now I'm probably gonna really be nitty. I think it's, uh, on the stone bubble, it's like queens and up.
Queens.
This is really gonna be not. And then ace king suited. Ace king off? No, I, I think. Uh, ace, and ace queen suited. That's probably it.
Okay, so here you are, way too bad.
Uh.
So like these, all of these are, are big calls. Okay?
Printing?
Yeah, while ace jack off maybe not, but ace jack suited definitely.
Okay.
Like ace jack off is pos- positive point two here. It's not too bad.
Uh-huh.
Pocket ten is pretty good. Pocket nine is marginal, but pocket ten is, uh, pretty good. This is the call. If your pocket nine has point twenty-six positive expectations and you fold it every time, Roger. It's twen- point twenty-six of your money. It's in your pocket.
Uh-huh.
You throw it away.
Uh-huh.
Here is your edge. Okay? And you can't pass on it. This, your money belongs to you. So you need to call. With these. Hey, your two. Alright.
Okay. Okay. Clear, clear, clear.
Alright, uh, give me a. Set. Oh. Okay, I got a good one. So. This one, you're the hijack. Okay, you got sixteen big blind. Okay? And then. The small blind has fourteen. Shoves into you on the stone bubble. What do you call with?
We're in the hijack versus small blind shove, sixteen first versus thirteen, so I cover him.
He's going broke if he loses.
Okay. Because I cover him, I think I can open up a little bit more, like a snitch for my own. Because if I lose, I'll still be able to. To get the money. A lot of the time. Um. Okay, if I don't know anything about the opponent, I would say like. Okay, I open the jams for thirteen fair. So I'm two. That's for the pairs. Nine and up.
Like hijacker, uh, you're not really in a still position, right? Almost, but not really. Then small blind.
Oh, yeah.
Small blind, he can make money kind of, but he has to steal a little bit as well, you know? But he can make, so it's like, uh, uh, two, two-sided metal, right? Small blind can make it with his fourteen, but he has to shove to push some equity. And like, put you in the box a little bit as well.
Yeah, because you said like, uh, we are not really in a steel position. So our range is more value. Value heavy and probably also. The awareness of the small blind, he's like, uh. A little bit paying attention. Yeah, so his regems, jams are prob- his regem, uh, range is probably much stronger. Than like a button versus small lines, we jam range.
Look at this, he's jumping ten suited into you. You see his jamming range now. Pocket four.
Uh-huh.
Five suited, queen ten, queen here, blah, 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 you see this? Right?
Uh-huh.
This is his, uh, his strategy, now you know his strategy. What do you call with?
Uh-huh. If he jams like that.
He jumps like that. You're on the bubble.
Uh, I think like nines and up. It's, it's mixing. Ace jack suited. Ace queen off. Up. Yeah, it just makes thing, and that's it.
He just made one mistake here. But maybe, maybe. This one is mixing, this one is out of range.
Oh.
Pocket nine is.
Okay.
All. But it's like zero E V.
Uh-huh.
So it's like not positive.
Yeah, okay, okay, so tens, tens and up.
The rest is pretty good.
Uh-uh.
You need to be really tight.
Yeah, so the. See now, like in general, you don't want to. Call off allins. With king queen suited at all.
At all.
So if king queen suited doesn't call, then king queen off.
Never.
Never gonna call.
Never.
Uh-uh. Uh-uh.
Never.
Yeah, I keep, uh, king queen off, but I'd never called, but.
The difficulty always often gonna be between ace nine and ace queen off. That's all the I C M plays. Between these four.
Uh-huh.
As they say, you're rarely gonna call off.
Yeah.
Like ace nine. In the wildest, wildest field positions and scenarios, it might be in there, might be the floor. And then, in the tightest scenarios, this is the one that leaves, the good old ace queen off. So.
Uh-huh. Oh.
Alright.
Okay, this is. So better.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
You're on the final table. Let's see, and then. Eight layers left.
Uh-huh.
Average is twenty-five big blinds. Uh, you raise from the cutoff.
Uh-huh.
And then the big blind goes all in.
I cover him, does he cover me?
What? Uh, you're both covered. You cover each other.
Yeah, okay, we have the same stack.
Yeah.
And we're like, eight and nine in tournament, or one and two?
Twenty-three big blinds, uh, everyone is equals stacks, twenty-five.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um. A bit shorter than everyone else.
Okay. Okay. A jam from twenty five big, so?
Yeah.
It's a big jam.
Twenty three.
Yeah, it's a very big jam. I will say tens not. And tens are really feels like.
Eight are like, zero E V calling twenty percent. Nines are.
Okay, so. It's not, nines full?
Nines are in there, uh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I think ace jack suited, mixing, ace queen's right in there. And I think ace queen off. That's it.
Alright.
So ace jack, it's tennis, not in there? Or isn't there?
No, that's the range, uh, ace jack is in there. You said it was mixing, you can see, the one that is mixing. Uh, it goes like that.
Yeah, okay. So I missed nines and I'm. Half missed, half missed, ace jack suited. So ace queen is good, um. Okay, and eights are, is really in there, like also. Um, E V wise. Or not? Yeah, okay.
They're in there, but it's like mixing zero E V.
Yeah. It's final table, although we don't make a lot of final tables, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on the lower ones.
Okay. When you make one, you need to be ready.
Yeah, that's true, but.
Alright, let's get back to the bubble.
Yes, alright.
Okay. So, okay, you're on the bubble. You got eleven big blinds. Okay, you're under the gun, how you, how do you structure your range? What do you raise? Start with the pair.
From, um, twelve you say, oh, ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
On the bubble.
I think like on the bubble, I want to like, uh, have like column range. Uh, because I want to have hands that can call fold, and I want to have hands that can limp and call.
You, you're, you're either jamming or opening, just think about the opening sides.
Okay, if I do that, if, okay, if I'm like bound to that strategy, I think I would jam. Um. At the exact bubble, I think sevens and up.
Okay.
That could be much to lose, but.
Okay. So that, these are good jams, these are not good jams. Um, do you wanna min raise with something?
No, yeah. I think like, um. Looking at my range, I think like jack stands and minds are good jams.
Yeah.
Uh, I think queens. I would put queens in there too, and kings and aces, I would probably, um, min raise, call it off, of course. I can contend three of them, but that's why I also want to have a limping range, so I can limp. Depends on the table, but if I have a limping range, I can limp eights and nines. And I also have like aces and ace king.
Um, no limping on the bubble from eleven big blinds under the gun.
Hmm, okay. Okay, okay, uh, yeah, then this, then this is fine, so jamming with decks. Uh, nines to jacks and, um, min betting with beans to aces.
So what I wanna know is your offsuit aces here.
Uh, the offsuit ones are. I think. And I think we have like the low, yeah, the, the low offsuit aces and off kings even. It wants to jam, but I forgot if it was to jam on the button or on the gun, I think under the guns like suicide. To do that. Jamming king six off under the gun will be suicide, it's not, not very good.
So wha- what's the worst offsuit ace you opened here? Do you raise ace five offsuit under again?
No way.
It's ace eight offsuit.
Nah, probably also not, probably, probably like ace tennis. I think.
Raise ace ten?
Yeah, probably raise.
So you're gonna raise ace ten, ace jack?
Thinking about it.
Your short stack around the bubble. You're under it again.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm the most. Yeah.
Yeah, raise ace jack, right?
Yeah, it's queen, it's king, but. Had the, doesn't those hands wants to jam, think?
Oh, it doesn't matter for me, as long as you find these.
Yeah.
Okay, suited aces, and I mean, you're probably finding, what's the worst off suit that ace you opened here?
Ace seven, ace eight?
Yeah, something like this, right, so, like, it doesn't matter, as long as you find the edges. Right? Something like this.
Yeah.
Not even this.
Yeah, uh, we can, we can, uh, raise fold. King tens, king jack suited, king queen off. Uh, ace ten is, is ten, we can fold, is eight suited, is nine suited, is ten. If it got jammed or too much action, and for the rest, we can call it off.
Alright. So, as you know, like you, you have a. You could be facing it all in here. So now we wanna look at the same table, okay, but you're not under the gun anymore. Now you're under the gun one. Okay, and you're facing under the gun all in. The guy who just played. Okay, now we're under the gun one, we're facing is all in, what do you call it?
We still have fifteen. Eleven bigs?
Uh, we get a little bit more.
Okay, let's say fifteen?
Has eleven, we have got, we got fourteen.
And the rest is like fifteen, twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
On the bubble.
Why on the bubble, uh?
Start with ace jack off soon.
We're not gonna call that.
Ace queen off too.
Uh. That's even, uh, dicey, to be honest. I think it's ace king off and ace queen suited. Because we are fir- versus under the gun, one jam. So I think.
About pairs?
Pairs, I think it's like, uh. I thought it was jacks and out, but I could be wrong. I think it's like this.
That's good, that's good, that's good, that's exactly it. No ace queen, no ace queen.
Uh, yeah, because it looks like, uh, become ja- uh, champs. You have to be a lot more tighter, respectful, to get through like a lot of players. Even though, so yeah, and it's bubble, so. Okay?
Yeah. Now, you're facing the same jam.
Hmm.
But you're chip leader. And you're on the big blind.
The big blind, okay, that makes you a little bit.
Close the action.
Yeah, that makes it a little more, um.
You're facing the same eleven big blind jam.
Okay.
That you know is kinda tight now. But now you close the action and you got. You, you're the daddy.
Yeah, depends how, how much I am the daddy. If I'm the daddy with fifty bigs and the rest got like three.
You got thirty one big blinds, thirty one.
So if I lose, I got twenty. And until. If I don't lose a lot, a lot of, um, places by calling and losing, then. Can go snitch wider, but not too much, I think.
Start with the pairs.
Um. Versus under the gun. He jams, so I can. I think we can call off with nines here, to be honest, nine stands, that's probably mixing. Um. I don't want to call.
Are you pulling pocket eight?
Yeah. Pulling pocket eight.
So let's think about it, under the gun open, jams, he jams and.
Yeah.
Pulling to us, we're looking at two eights, you're gonna fold that. Why would you fold two eights?
Yeah, I don't know, that's just feels, versus under the gun jam.
Yeah.
From eleven, I think if, if he's got like nine bigs, right, I would be happy to throw the chips in. But for some reason psychologically, I think when somebody gets like over ten, ten, eleven bigs, jams. But maybe it's a little too tight there. It should be a call. But, yeah, I, I, I'm not gaining much, um, like the.
You're giving money to your opponent.
Huh?
You're giving money to your opponent.
Yeah, if I don't need to take this spot. Then why?
If there's a spot that you know is profitable, and you don't take it. You take the money from that spot and you give it away to somebody else.
Uh, uh.
And then he makes money and you don't.
Yeah, true. Yeah, it's, it's just, uh, it's like, just like an, uh, uh, in a point where I say, ah, yeah. Uh, you know, it's like a, like a the edge, I think, yeah. And if I, if I lose more.
We have to say like, okay. Like, we don't care anymore, you know? Uh, if they wanna play, they wanna play, and then we have to wait, we're kinda screwed here.
Uh, uh.
What about two sevens?
Hmm, no, two sevens, I'm not going.
No?
Nope. Because I don't think they. They are like, uh, making profit, like. But that's just feel like.
So who gets the money from the value of sevens, your opponent? He wants the money and you stay at zero? What about sixes? Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Oh, I got disconnected.
Oh, okay.
What about s- s- sevens and sixes, Roger?
This is alright, oh, no.
Oh, no.
No, nah, no, I don't know, no, I'm done, I'm disconnecting it. No, I don't know, but I, it's like. No, I don't know, yeah. I, like my, my way of thinking is like, if I don't need to take the risk. Especially, let's, let's set something straight. Uh, I don't know the guy, so I don't know if it's like tight or loose or.
Okay, let me tell you how to ice it. This pocket eight here is worth somewhere between twenty five cents and one dollar. And it belongs to my, to me. Simple as that, cause I wanna, I need that dollar. I need that twenty five cent here. I need that fifteen cent here, you know, and I don't care what, what happens.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we just go, I need my fifteen cent of value here, okay?
The, the problem with.
Take me fifty cent here.
Yeah.
This year, I'm gonna take my dollar.
I, I agree with when you said, okay, uh, if you, uh, you don't take the winning spots. You get, you're gonna, you're going to give a lot, too much away of your equity.
Yeah.
Um, I agree.
You need to gather these, because very often, like, one of them is gonna have queens, you're gonna have sevens, and then. Bunch of sevens are gonna come, or a straight, or whatever, you know? They, they have a value because they have equity against anything. So, it's gonna happen, you know?
Yeah, the, the, like, that's, that's one part of the, like, one part of way of thinking about it. Uh, but the other one, thinking about it, it's like, this range is based on opponents that shove. Correctly. Um, uh, I agree with you that people are more able to shove the correct ranges. Um, but mostly from, I think mostly from button or cut off, I don't think everybody knows the correct ranges. From every position. So, if I. Go on with, further with that thought, I will say, okay, so probably people are sure, but that's my, um, my opinion, uh. Could be wrong, probably people shoving like less as charts. So, I'm just gonna take a snitch off the, the bottom of my rate, my calling range there. And I call just a little bit tighter, not much, but just a little bit. And that's like my way of thinking about it, but could be wrong, but. I, I, I understand what you mean, that you have to take your spot, because otherwise you are just, uh, giving away your money.
Yeah.
Um, I understand.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try there to be loser, um, on the pairs there.
What about aces here?
The aces, um, if I'm already have been, have to be like. Yeah, the, the, I think like, if you look at sharps, then probably. Um. I think on the ace side, I just want to be tied as well.
Suited aces, what are you doing, ace ten suited?
I think that's the bottom. Ace ten suited and up? Yeah, and.
Ace jack off.
Ace jack off is, uh, no bueno. So ace queen, ace king off, that will be it, eight, the other one's not there, so, yeah, like this.
Yeah. The ace ten, no good.
No, no.
This is the range.
More, more person I would expect it, but probably you have like, uh. A lot of flips, uh, versus ace king two, king queen suited that will jam, king queen off, maybe jams. Ten jack suited, I think from the, under the gun is also a jam. From nine or ten, eleven bigs. So there are a lot of hands that you have flip against. Um, yeah. Something like that, I think, yeah. Okay, so the pairs. I need to call off more wider with pairs, a little snitch more.
Yeah.
And especially when I'm big stack at the final table.
Now this is the bubble.
Oh, this is the bubble, sorry.
The bubble.
Yeah, the bubble, yes, yeah.
Alright, let's make another one. Okay, so. You're on the bubble. And the cutoff has twelve big blinds.
Yes.
Okay, that. He goes all in. And then you got twenty-one big blinds. From the big line, what do you call it?
Uh, on the bubble, cut off jams, I'm on the button, uh, on the big blind, you said?
Yeah.
Cut off is still a steel position. A little bit, but not as much as the bottom.
Twelve bigs, yeah.
Twelve big, twelve bigs, um. Can easily go and make the money, so probably. Probably like.
Yeah, I like your reasoning and thinking about positions, you're thinking about, you make the money or not.
Yeah. Yeah, trying to do that as much as I can. To. Think about what I should call, it's easier to remember then.
Yeah.
So I think. Because he's like really late. Little bit more late, uh, ladyish position, you can jam a little bit more. So I can call off a little bit more. So I think it's like eight set up. Okay. Ace jack suited and up, and ace queen off. Okay, and then. Ace queen off is a mistake, probably.
I don't know why it's really, really tight there.
Yeah.
Just going with this.
He's going with ace king, okay, tens and that's really tight.
Yeah, really, really tight.
I don't understand that. But okay, it's fine, if it's like this, it's like this. Okay, okay. Alright.
I think that's gonna be good for today, man.
Yeah, it's good.